All right, there she is. All right, and I think Joe was comfortable with us getting started without him. Um, we have plenty. Okay, so. There we go, 6:32. Um, let's call this meeting of the special meeting of the Board of Ed. To order on central middle school ed specs, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you guys for joining. Thank you for making this, uh, you know, funny time to do this special meeting. Um, before we jump into it, just to, this is obviously unique. Of course, building a new school is unique. Um, and I, so I know this is very much the first draft. And that's why we wanted to have this forum to kind of just get this started. We'll probably see this, you know, I think this is, we'll have this as a second draft. We're of course going to have public comment. We're sort of working on a path where it's probably need to approve this sometimes in June. So, um, I don't want everyone to get nervous that they have to get all of their questions out tonight. I just think this is the beginning of a discussion. So, and the other thing I think is important is that since it, we are, so that we kind of keep this moving along in a helpful manner, that I'm sort of going to take it section by section. And then sort of say, you know, do you have any questions, our thoughts? Um, just so we don't sort of jump all over the place. And, um, so with that, let me just introduce, or if they could introduce themselves, Dr. Jones, or maybe you could give us background who's joining us this evening.
And we do have three people from CSG on tonight. Roger LaFleur, Chris Seidley, and Fran DeFiore. And they're the ones that Roger and Fran are the ones that have really been out with staff. Most of you have met with them as well. We also have Tom Healy on to answer anything specific from his building. And I just want to reiterate what you said, Kathleen. This is the first, first draft. We still have work that we're going to want to do, for instance, like the security components, the facility staff. We all have, we haven't vetted this yet because it is a very first draft. And, um, we want to be sure and go in and check all of the items that are in here. So I'm going to turn it over to them, but I do just want to ask, I, I think, Mike, you're going to have to help, help Roger maybe, um, where he's only on one time. Is he still showing twice? Or did we take care of that?
I believe it's taken care of.
Okay.
A few seconds, I think.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, for some reason I was on twice. I don't know how that happened, but it, it did. And that was causing some of the, uh, distortion to the sound. But I, for whatever reason, I think I've lost the, the visual, but at least you can hear me. So that's good. In any event, uh, about, uh, do you want me to start now, Tony?
Yes, please do. Thank you.
Okay. So in any event, um, about two and a half months ago, we were asked to begin preparing the educational specifications for the new middle school. And, uh, that's something that Fran and I have worked on, uh, many, many times for multiple districts and schools. So one of the, part of that process, uh, is to come down and to speak with all of the people, all the stakeholders. And so over a period of quite a few days, uh, Fran and I interviewed, uh, I think well over 60 people for this, um, uh, for this set of, uh, educational specifications. And what we found out was very interesting. I mean, we found, you know, we found out about the issues and the studies that have been done on the school in terms of its structural issues. Also, the school being as old it is, as it is, it required really quite a bit of extensive upgrading. And so really the decision for a new school is, is quite, um, quite on the mark. Beyond the, um, interview process, what Fran and I bring to the educational specifications is a slightly different background each of us has. I've been in school construction for 25 years and I've been a state licensed building official for another 11 years. Um, I was also a director of school construction for Krec, uh, for about 10 years. Fran has been an educator her whole life. She's been a assistant superintendent, a principal, and, and, and a very solid educator. And between the two of us, we're able to merge our thinking and work with the staff to help, you know, determine what's going to make, uh, the set of circumstance, or the set of specifications that are going to meet the circumstances that they have. So that process started, uh, at the school with the staff. And, uh, Tom was very good in terms of lining up people. And we were, um, really amazed, as you can see this list of folks here, that, um, have, uh, participated and contributed to the information. What we found, uh, isn't just, um, problems, it's also what would make things work better? What, what would make your job teaching children better? What are the things that you need that will make you a more effective educator? And what's going to help the students also, uh, facilitate their learning? So that's a part of the approach that we take to going forward here. And it's in the interviews that we find out the deficiencies within the system. And, and then when we start to write this specifications, we make sure that we incorporate the thinking that went behind all of these concepts and ideas that we heard from these people. So that's the process. Um, through that same process, what we also found out, there was other issues that came up. And what I want to make sure people understand is that while these issues are very important to the school, they aren't necessarily part of the educational specifications. And let me give you two examples. One was we heard from people, I, I think there were people who were pretty much from the community, and they were concerned about traffic patterns and around the neighborhood at specific times. And what we're going to do is we're going to make sure that the design professionals, the team of architects and engineers that do get selected to, to develop this school, are aware that this, that there's a sensitive issue with regards to traffic and that they're going to have to pay extremely good, uh, special attention to this to make sure that not only can they possibly make it better, but they certainly can't make it worse. And so they're going to come in knowing ahead of time that this is an issue that's important to the school. While it doesn't really have anything to do with the educational specifications, it is important in the overall concept of a new school. Uh, the other issue that came up that was, uh, brought, uh, by a number of people was the concept of, of combining the, uh, central office along with the new middle, middle school. And I think, uh, in the beginning of the ed spec, I think if, uh, actually if you would back it up just a little bit, I'd appreciate it and go to the forward, uh, we kind of explain in that process that right there, down towards the end, that, um, what we can do is, again, we can bring that to the attention of the architects, but I think what has to happen first is a serious discussion by the Board of Ed, understanding how this would work, if it could work, and then decide how they want to go forward. If they decide they want to do that, then all, really all that has to happen then is it's going to get a separate set of educational specifications. The state doesn't allow us to combine that as one project. They may fund it as one project, but as far as the state's concerned, it gets a totally separate application. So that's a process that's going to have to happen on the board side, uh, in the next, you know, six months or so. Um, and, and then we can take our direction from you once you decide what you want to do. That being said, uh, the rest of the document really is prescriptive. It, it, it basically points out, you know, what, what the state asks us to do. The state says, we want to know, you know, what is the project goals? What is the rationale for the project? So we, we detail what that is, uh, on, on this specific project. And we give the rationale for it, um, after we've talked to everybody. And I think we have a, a pretty good rationale for it. Um, you can keep moving forward if you would like. The long range educational plan, that is something we, we also, uh, were able to get from the administration. Um, and basically lays out what your long-term educational goals are. Because if you're going to build a school that's going to be functional for the next 30, 40, 50 years, we have to make sure that going into it, that we're giving you the best facility we can to support those educational goals for the longest period of time that we can. Mission and vision, that's also part of, uh, the discussion we had with the, uh, board members and the administration. And then we define what your learning education, educational activities are. And those are pretty much aligned with the state standards. And because of that, uh, we compare the size of the school as it would to the state's standards for school spaces. And what we found at the end of this process is that your school appears like it's going to be a little larger than a school with the population that you currently have. There we go into, and let me, let's try to put this down. The enrollment data and, and the project, uh, proposed project capacity. What has to happen is because you're, um, submitting a grant application, we have to meet certain requirements of the state. And one of the requirements is that they suggest you build a school to a size that is part of the enrollment, the long-range enrollment. So they allow you to go out eight years. Unfortunately, the enrollment projections for Greenwich, uh, in the, for the middle school have you peaking this year and next pretty much, and then declining going forward. So the year that we actually submit the grant application is the year that the enrollment will be, the enrollment that will be utilized to determine that portion of the school that's going to be reimbursable on the school grant. We are using, because the projection right now told us for next year, because we're going to be grant supposedly going to, uh, submit the grant application in next year, that that enrollment is at 511 students. I think you're at 542 right now. That number's not hard and fast because what will happen is, well, we, we can actually wait till next year. And I think in October, when you know what your, the, the enrollment is for the middle school, that is the number that we can use. And it, and there's a chance it may be higher than that. And if it is, we, we, we can certainly up it and that will give you additional square footage that would be reimbursable. Other than that, what we, what we basically lay out, and we start with academic core classroom, classrooms, are what a classroom should look like in a 21st century school. And, uh, what you can see is there's a lot of emphasis on increased room sizes. There's also a lot more technology in these rooms. Uh, we also talk about, um, energy efficiency and lighting, soundproofing, um, all sorts of things that are going to go into these classrooms that classrooms from just 10, 15, 20 years ago did not have. Uh, and that goes right through all of the science classrooms, the support spaces. And it just continues on through each academic area within the school. Media center, auditorium, gymnasium, special education, all of these areas are defined. They're defined for the space, they're defined for what they're supposed to have. And, um, what this does primarily is it provides the framework to the architects so that when they go to design the school, they don't inadvertently give you 700 square foot classroom. We've already basically said that classroom cannot be under 800 square feet. So this keeps them honest and gives you the school that we intended, or that you folks intended to have. And it goes right through every space is defined, even storage space. Then if you continue on through the, through the balance of this, uh, inventory, so to speak, you'll see at the end, there's a, uh, last three pages basically define what's in the, all of that space is combined into a matrix. You're almost there. Right there it starts. And what that does is it adds up all of the different spaces that we talked about. It, and, and at the end of the page, or end of the third page, it tells us that the school's going to be approximately 103,000 and change square feet. There you go. Almost 104,000. So that's the overall process. Um, and Fran and I are willing to answer any questions you might have regarding how we got here, uh, or did we, or any questions you might have about things that, uh, of interest to you?
Great. Thank you so much. I am going to try to open my screen while, um, do you need to keep that up? I guess you didn't give up there. I'm just going to minimize them so I can see who's raising hands. Uh, but like I said, if we could just go through it sort of in orderly fashion. So starting, thank you so much, by the way. Great opening and great overview. So, um, I don't think we need to talk about the forward or the project overview. But if anyone, and I imagine we all understand why we're here, the rationale for the project, I think we could skip that. Um, but anyone have questions, long range? I think that's mission, vision, that's all strategy. You guys have talked about that. So let's go on, unless I hear anything else, I'm going to go straight to the learning, education activities section. Academic goals, um, things along those lines. Do you guys have any questions? But if I skipped a section, feel free to raise your hand and let me know. All right. Ms. Costin, and I need to open my screen so I could see everyone. Go ahead.
Um, so I just worry about, um, the, the talk, the, the wording in the document about the auditorium. Because I know that the one we have now is maybe considered oversized in, in the current environment. However, you know, it's not just for the students. All the students that, you know, say, might come to see a play, for one of their siblings is also attached, you know, to two or three, or maybe even more people. And as you know, we use those, um, audit, that auditorium for meeting spaces because it's centrally located. Sorry, there's a crying kid. Um, um, so I just worry that if we scale it down, it may not be adequate for our needs.
Um, can I say something here?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we, we kept the auditorium the same size. The only thing, the only reason we mentioned the fact that it was larger than your typical middle school was because it hit, it, as such, it's going to have a little bit of an impact on the reimbursement rate. The state does not reimburse auditoriums at the same rate. They do other programmatic spaces. And the reason they do that is because they're trying to discourage communities from building large auditoriums for community use as opposed to school use. And that's, that's their way of doing it. But if a community decides that that's what they want and it's important to them, then they can go, they can go forward and do that. And so we did, we kept your auditorium the size that you've requested. We just want to make sure that you're aware that there'll be a slight impact financially on it.
I, I mean, yes, I just, you know, I'm concerned that there may be, um, a budgetary concern with the, with the size of it going forward. But I think it, if we need one that adequately meets the needs of our students and their families, for sure.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Ms. Downey?
Thanks. Um, just kind of, I, I actually don't know if we need the document in front of us, Kathleen. Just, it's kind of weird not seeing everybody's faces.
Thank you. Yes.
Uh, anyway, um, just a couple of things in this intro section. Um, and one thing's globally, if we could call it the grant, the central middle school instead of the Greenwich Middle School, I can find, because we do have three middle schools. That was just, a global comment. Um, in this intro section, um, one thing that I wanted to ask about was there in the kind of learning and there were, there was a reference to, I'm going to, it's three things. A unified arts program, um, an outdoor amphitheater. And then at one point we talk about a STEAM theme. So I don't know, maybe Tom can talk to those. Those were, I, those kind of jumped out at me as something I didn't really think we did, but maybe I'm wrong. Um, so if you could talk to those three kind of, obviously the outdoor amphitheater is a new thing. The STEAM theme and the unified, unified arts program, if someone could speak to those would be great. Thanks.
Uh, I'm happy to respond to that. So unified arts is just one of the many terms we use to describe our exploratory classes, our elective classes, which is just, you know, art, consumer science, technology. So it's unified arts because it is the arts program. So it's nothing, it's just the catch-all phrase for all of those classes that we offer at the middle schools, at all three middle schools. So that's that. Um, in terms of the STEAM theme, I think the, the hangup is sort of on theme. We do not have a theme. Um, it's, it's not, uh, that we are themed. But what we talked about in terms of discussing, um, our approach was we talked a lot about interdisciplinary approaches, collaborative learning experiences. And I think that, you know, potentially, um, and I guess Fran and Roger could kind of speak to that. That's sort of probably other middle schools and other schools use that idea of STEAM as the catch-all. We don't say STEAM or really use STEAM. Um, we just talked more about collaborative learning experiences and interdisciplinary learning opportunities. So when we design a new building, the, um, proximity to different classes and classrooms can foster more collaboration.
Yeah, maybe we just need to clarify that in the document, I think, because kind of for people. Because I, I think, you know, I've served on two building committees and I think we want to be as simple and clear so that when anybody picks this document up, they completely understand where we're going. Just because then, because we don't want to, you know, want to be efficient about our time. And, um, thank you, Tom. That's helpful. Um, I don't know if you guys, um, the consultants want to talk about the outdoor amphitheater, or maybe that's a Tom issue as well?
I can, I can do a little bit there. Uh, we found that, uh, in doing educational specifications for other middle schools, that it was a way that we could increase some of the educational spaces without taking space from the interior of the building. So what we decided and what's going on with a lot of these, uh, programs is they're creating these really creative outdoor spaces, kind of an amphitheater. It's lit, it's got sound, it's technology-based, and it can be used for multiple purposes. It can be a reading area, it can be poetry, it can be arts, it can be demonstration, it can be all sorts of things. Now, of course, it's based on a portion of the year being, being, uh, uh, able to use it, okay? But when it is able to be used, um, it makes a really, a, a really neat, innovative, uh, educational space. And it doesn't take away from program space inside which we're really, really very protective of because we try real hard to make sure that all of that space can go into legitimate classroom space and other areas like that if we can. So that's the thinking behind it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Hirsch?
Uh, thank you for putting together such a, you know, well thought-through document. I have one note at the start. Um, I saw that at the end of the, you know, the last, uh, three pages, you laid out the program diagram and matrix in a chart. But it doesn't include information as to what's currently in the building for comparison sake. And I'm hoping that we can get that with the next iteration, just so that, um, you know, for those of us who've not necessarily spent a lot of time in that building, it might be exceptionally helpful to see what they're currently working with versus what we're proposing so that it doesn't, you know, we have a better understanding, if that's okay. Thank you for addressing the STEAM theme. I was wondering about that one as well. So, and, and you addressed the enrollment, but I did have a quick question. Um, and I think that this is for others that, you know, while, while we have, uh, you, you're focused on the max enrollment of 511 for next year. It's five, as you said, 540 something now. Um, it was, you know, higher than that before that. And, uh, and then the highest enrollment, excuse me, it was 578 last year, I believe. And then the highest enrollment going forward in the 10-year span that I've seen, I think is 526. I, I'm not sure if we are required to use the current enrollment as a basis. I thought it was a, an average over the next decade or something like that. And I was just sort of thinking it might be a little short-sighted if we do that, if we have options to make it slightly larger based on, uh, future enrollment or previous enrollment in the past few years. Just because we have a build it, if our, our town is a very much, if you build it, they will come mentality. Um, we've seen it with a lot of other schools. We also have other, um, middle schools that are over, currently overcrowded. So, um, can you just sort of address as to why you chose, uh, if we are required to choose that number? I know it's partially for, um, reimbursement. But if you can explain for, um, others who might not understand what happens, uh, in reimbursement-wise, if we build it slightly larger than enrollment?
Certainly. Uh, so the state basically says, the year that you submit the application, and let's say we're going to submit this application next year. So we have to submit it by June 30th of '23. Okay? So we would take the enrollment for that year, which right now is projected at 511. Now, we normally don't have to use that year. We're allowed by the state to go out eight years, not 10. We can go out eight years and take the highest number. So in year eight, if you were up around 600, we could take the 600. It just so happens though, that the projections we, we got from Greenwich, um, indicated that this is the highest year you're in right now at 542. And next year it goes to 511. So if we get different, uh, demographics, if we get different numbers, uh, if we update the, if this study gets updated, we, and the numbers go higher, by all means, we would use the highest number we're going to be allowed to use because we want to get you the most school and the most reimbursement that we can. So, but we're bound, you know, the, the enrollment projections will get submitted to the state. They, in fact, I think the gentleman who does them is Peter Prada. And he, he worked for the state for many years. He's on his own now. And I believe he's the one who's updated the, the numbers. So, but we can, uh, we can still talk with him next year and we'll see where it stands. And if that number changes next year, especially if it changes to, uh, a, a better number, then by all means, that's the number we will use.
Right. Well, when I looked at our enrollment projections, uh, that were given to us, uh, last year, I had, uh, I mean, 526 for 24, 25. So that's already higher than 511, just as an aside. I'm happy to make sure you get those documents. But, um, just for those who might not understand, if we, if we decide to make this slightly larger, uh, in case there is a shift, we have, again, overcrowded middle schools elsewhere where in town. And, you know, you never know, um, what happens reimbursement-wise? We're only reimbursement, reimbursed for a certain percentage of the space as is, correct?
That's right. Right. Uh, for new construction, I believe Greenwich's reimbursement rate is 10%. So what would happen is if, depending on how much larger the school was than what the enrollment would normally allow, that will be discounted from the reimbursement rate. So in effect, you could end up with 9.3% or something like that because there would be a discount to it because you went over the enrollment, uh, the size of the school went over the enrollment. Okay. It's a little complicated. I hope that's, I hope that helps make it clear, but it's, uh, the way it works.
Yeah, and I have one other question. Uh, well, I mean, I have a few, but I'll just ask one more now and give other people an opportunity. One of the things I know that came up, um, in my discussion with you, um, as well as countless others who I've heard from, was the use of flex and swing spaces. And I noticed that there were a few in there, but I was just wondering, um, there were some spaces that you delineated. For instance, uh, in-school suspension space, um, which might be better served to be as a flex, flex space for alternate learning. Um, you know, I just, you know, I don't think we have enough in-school suspensions to warrant a sole classroom per se. I hope not. Um, you know, the staff room for just the, um, uh, you know, the paras. I didn't know if, again, that would just be utilized maybe as a second staff room. Um, and I'm just wondering if you have any other, you know, you outlined a sensory room, but didn't detail exactly what you're going to be including in there, how we're going to make sure that we have enough flex space and swing space within the school. Because again, I know that that's something that, uh, a lot of the administration, the staff, parents, students, educators had felt was really important to be a facility.
Fran, can you help me on that one?
Sure. Hi, everyone. I'm Fran DeFiore. Um, so, you know, obviously, um, when we talked with the special ed department concerning, uh, the cer- certain rooms that they needed, um, for certain things, uh, you know, we talked about like the sensory room. They would have certain equipment in there. Uh, we talked about, um, the ability for people to come in and out. You know, I think sometimes this becomes a natural thing where it becomes swing space based on the use to see what actually happens within the day. And then the principal, you know, I'm sure Tom is realizing and he's shaking his head, knowing that, you know, certain areas will become swing spaces just automatically. For example, like you said, you know, we talked about inside, uh, Roger and I had a conversation about the inside suspension room because, um, you know, Tom did indicate exactly what you had said, that it isn't used all the time. Um, and I'm sure that there'll be alternate, um, alternate uses. For example, if more than, um, more than one special ed teacher is doing, doing one-on-one testing and they need a quiet place, if, you know, there's all kinds of reasons why you need these quiet, you know, small spaces to work with students or whether there's a small group that needs extra help and paras tend to sometimes want to move them out of the room. We know that that will just come kind of naturally, but these spaces will be available. Um, and that, that'll come by, you know, Tom allowing these places, you know, spaces to be used. Um, and they'll be there. They'll be there for them.
Perfect. I mean, I know sensory rooms are built in a very specific manner. There are very- Perfect. I mean, I know sensory rooms are built in a very specific manner. There are very needed. I'm not suggesting that we take any of those away. I just was wondering, you know, if it might be better delineated in the ed specs as one of the central uses and some of those for, not the sensory room. I just was hoping to get a little more information on that at some point, but like flex spaces, because I, I have concerns that, you know, we don't seem to have enough flex spaces, and I don't want people to suggest that we don't need some of the spaces as they are simply titled now. So that was why, you know, I'm asking, but.
And then, you know, the parent, we talked at length with the parents as well. And, you know, it's difficult because, you know, the parents don't have home. And what happens is, you know, they wanted, they have materials that they use. You know, we talked with a lot of them that use different books, different materials within different classrooms. And they wanted a place just to, you know, even a cubby in a room where they all could put their belongings. Where they could go back and forth because they happened to be in sixth grade, but then the next class they're going to be in seventh grade. They wanted to pick up their materials. And they talked about having that, you know, space where they could have this, this cubby in a room where they could keep, you know, their purse locked and have their coat there and have their lunch there. You know, and be able to put their lunch there and then also have the materials. You know, to their credit, they, they have different materials for their different groups of kids. And they were like, it's nice to have a spot to have and go back and forth between classes.
So your term staff room is more like an office and a, that, that makes perfect sense. It was just the delineation of that, that I was, I thought it was like a break room.
Each of them would have their own particular cubby where they could have a place to keep their things.
Thank you for the clarification.
No problem.
Thank you. Ms. Kowalski?
Thanks, Bethany. Just a quick process question on how this document works. So when you get to the back end where you see the, the chart works as the number of classrooms and stuff. For example, I don't see in there, shoot, I just lost my place. So I would, I don't see in there like the outdoor learning or student wellness. Is that something? Do we read this all as one document? And those spaces aren't in that chart? Or do those, or do those rooms need to be in that chart to count as the?
One of the things about what Roger had indicated before, the nice thing about an outside space, the amphitheater, is that we're not required to include that in our square footage. So that counted, which is great because it's kind of, we call it like free space in which we can use because it's not counted against us with regard to square footage. In terms of, I'm sorry, what was the other thing you asked about?
Yeah, the student wellness.
Oh, student wellness. We were talking, when we had spoken with the counselors and we had spoken with the support staff, the social worker and the school psychologist, and they had talked about within guidance, within the counseling office, having a, a space, a designated area for, for students that they could sit and, and actually, you know, be able to have some quiet and to be able to kind of unwind if something was going on. And so we were incorporating that space within. If you look under, if you look under the counseling office, you'll see that's taken care of. It may not be indicated there, but that's, that was the intention. It was be within that space.
Okay. Yeah, I was just, I was just curious, and I was gonna ask Tom about this because unlike the high school, I don't believe the middle school have like a, a block that they have free, right? And I wasn't sure how we were going to utilize a student wellness room and as it was described, where they could go and kind of hang out zone out or whatever, because they don't have that free space. Well, this sounds very cool for the high school. I wasn't sure how it was being utilized. So I appreciate that. Then I just had one other question in this section regarding the outdoor learning space, which I do think is a very cool option. My question is, did, was there any consideration concerning just spacing and how big this amphitheater is in compared to, like, because I'm just trying to figure out from, you know, with the school parking access fields, like, how big is this square footage? Do we, would we add on the outside, trying to think conceptually if we have the room for it, given everything else we have?
The quick answer is no. Okay. Just to be honest with you. What we do is we, we know that there's going, the concept to have an amphitheater is part of the ed spec. It will be in the school. What we, what we do here, like, and I think I said this in the beginning with the forward, this is a framework. And this really is given as a guidance to the architects. So when these folks, these men and women who are designers, take on this task of actually designing the school and making sure that the footprint of the building, the athletic fields, the parking, the bus, the parent drop-off, all of those things go together. They're going to see how much room they've got to work with. It, it could very well be that it's a fairly minimal space. It might only be able to handle one or two classrooms worth of kids at a time. Or if we're lucky and, and, and things work out to our benefit, it might be an area where you could actually put in four, five or six grades in an amphitheater. But we, we just can't, we can't hamstring these guys. We have to, we have to let them create the space that they have to work with. And we have a finite amount of room and we're just going to trust that they're, that they're going to make it work well.
That's all I had on this section. Thanks, Bethany.
Thank you. Michael Joseph?
Thanks. Thanks for, thanks, I'd say, I, I appreciate the document. It's really, really helpful. Let me make sure that I have the the numbers around reimbursement and enrollment projections, correct? So right now, the ed specs are, are built around five eleven, which is, and that number is in part really based on enrollment projections over the next, you know, larger part of the decade, as well as what we know will get the ten percent state enrollment on, state refund on or the money back.
So what Peter Prada did is he went out eight years for us. In twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, the projection is five eleven. When you look at the next eight years, five eleven is the largest number.
Historically, this building has been, do we even know? It's probably been over six, I think.
Correct. It was back in two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve.
So in, in these specifications, so how, how real is that five eleven number? So like, we have five hundred and fifty students there. For example, in twenty twenty-eight, what does that, what does that look like? We have a sense like how much, how much, how much give does that five eleven number have? Or do we as a board really, because I think there's probably, you know, the conversation sounds like we're going to have to have is whether or not we want to reduce the level of reimbursement to make a, a, a school that fits more the, you know, some of our historical capacity over time. So, but I guess it would be helpful to know how much, how much leeway is in that five eleven?
Well, from the state's perspective, there's no leeway.
Right.
So the, in other words, the state just says, you, you must do a eight-year enrollment projection, and you're allowed to use the highest number in that eight years, and that's what we, we have to use.
But, but physically, what does that look like? How crowded is the building if there's five hundred and eighty kids in it?
Oh, well, that's, that could be a problem. Okay, yeah, that's. What I will say, and short of telling you what you already know, what I will tell you though, is that with most of the schools that we have done educational specifications for in the last ten years, enrollment projections have been pretty accurate. Now, as anything else, they're more accurate the closer you are to the, to that next date. So in other words, I would say Peter's number, Mr. Prada's number on five eleven for next year is probably pretty accurate. Okay? It, it can change, and there, there are certain circumstances that will allow for that to change, but more than likely, that number is probably pretty close. What happens is the following year, he's probably a little less accurate and then the less accurate after that, because so many unknown things can happen, like housing developments and a new school or charter school or a magnet school coming in. Different things can happen. Okay? So, so, but I would tell you that for next year, it's probably pretty close. And to your other point, you know, if you fluctuate by five, ten, fifteen students, it's probably not going to make a huge difference. Okay? But if you were to fluctuate by fifty or sixty students, I think you'd start to see some marginalized classroom space due to the enrollment of that nature.
I see. Okay, thanks. So can I, can I ask on the same section? If I can, that makes sense. So the fifth, on page six, at least I think it's page six. No, it's on page three. It's paginated, it's page three on the actual document. There's a three in the document on my screen viewer page six. But on page three, the long-range educational plan, I guess the fifth bullet up to create spaces that facilitate and encourage cross-disciplinary learning, allow faculty and staff, physical space to implement programs to engage, prepare and inspire students, as well as support the vision of Greenwich graduate. I, I don't know if you're, you're able to comment more on how you see the document in general, speaking, speaking to that. Or if that's something that we need to articulate a little better for the, for the building community, committee?
Yeah, I think, I think, well, to encourage the cross-disciplinary learning has, has a little bit to do with the unified arts theme in terms of, that's part of it. We try to, I think also, I think you're going to see that the media center is going to become not the media center that you and I went to school or library. Okay, it's going to, it's, it's more digital, it's more technology. There's not as many book stacks. The spaces are, are designed more for collaboration and group working together scenarios. There'll be a lot more spaces so that that's sort of what we're talking about when we, we talk about physical space to implement programs. So media center is going to be complete, a very different facility that, like I said, you and I went to school for. Okay?
They, and do we have, Mr. Healy, I don't know, are we organized in, is the middle school organized in a team structure? It is, isn't it?
Yes. So currently, we have two teams per grade level. They sit around somewhere between ninety and a hundred right now per team. But just to follow up a little bit on what Roger was describing and to your, to your point. When we discussed sort of building orientation, I think that's where that came, came through. So we talked a lot about, in the years that I have been there, the media center has evolved. So our, when I got there, we still had the reference section with the encyclopedias on the wall, dictionaries and a whole bunch of things. We got rid of those through a grant with the Greenwich Alliance. And we have made that into an innovative space, an innovation space. So much more hands-on technology-driven learning opportunities where teachers are bringing their classes up, or prior to COVID, they were bringing their classes up and working with media specialists to integrate that technology and those opportunities into their curriculum in that content area. So our idea was, since this had already started happening, wouldn't it be great to orient the building to support that a little bit more easily? Because right now, the media center is sort of farther away from some of the other areas of the building that it might partner well with, like unified art. So for example, technology, the actual industrial arts technology side of the building is literally the opposite end of the media center. And so we have kids who are working on 3D printing projects and sketch-up and design on two opposite ends of the building. It would make much more sense if they were closer in proximity and there was a way for students to collaborate in interdisciplinary way that way. So I think that's where that bullet was sort of referenced in terms of how we wanted to design the building. It was where certain programs were located, so teachers could be more collaborative with colleagues for student benefit.
That makes a lot of sense. That, that sounds awesome. The, I was happy to see like the maker space in there too, that makes a lot of sense. I guess the, the one, the one thought I had or the one question, the, which I don't see on a bullet, but to, to what you were saying there, and the organization around teams, if the, in these buildings here, is that the, the structure, I know you have the, while you're thinking about the media center centered, is the, the great teams, I guess that would depend on how science classrooms are, are organized and things like that. It's, I don't know if the, the rest of the building is oriented around that team approach, or if it's more departmentalized. I didn't, I didn't get that from, from this document. I imagine that's something we'd want to specify.
It is something that has definitely been a focus with the conversations with the teachers. They definitely would like to see that as, as, you know, sixth grade teams. They want this, the side, the two sixth grade science labs, you know, in a particular area, sixth grade classrooms. They're seeing the library media center with the technology around it as the hub of the building, you know, with that being the center. Having the offshoot of the, of the, the sixth grade, the seventh grade and the eighth grade. So it's centrally located for all three grades. There was a lot of conversation about that, which makes a lot of sense.
It does.
Yeah.
Cool.
Doesn't exist. So because of the physical limitations that, that they have right now.
Okay, I'm going to make sure everyone gets the first round of questions before I do second one. So Joe, I think you're next as a result.
Oh, great. I'll be quick. Questions I have, the question I have is more related to, we talk about a larger auditorium than possibly the school needs because of town use. Presently, we use it for the RTM meetings. And I think we might have referred to that, the amphitheater as being a larger than, than necessary for other reasons. Let me understand the process. Within the ed specs, what we do is we identify the oversized auditorium. Do the calculations for how many parking spots are necessary for such a size auditorium? And then we pass that on to the A and E process. Is, is that what we do?
You pass it on to who? I missed something there.
The architectural engineering, when we pass that on to them.
Yes.
We, basically, you just come up with a, a numerical calculation on how many parking spots would be necessary to service such a oversized theater. And then it's on the A and E to actually design or figure out where to put that parking. Is that what we're going to do?
That's pretty much it. I mean, they'll, they will have to also meet zoning regulations in terms of quantity. There's a, a little bit of a prescriptive analysis that occurs at that point. So there's a minimum and it'll be that if they have the extra space and they can create more parking, by all means, they will.
But the point is that would be on them. You would say you need, you need six hundred spots that are beyond, on the, the, the architects and the engineers to maybe design underground parking, multi-level parking, something that they would have to be creative on in order to meet the needs that you put forward to them in the ed specs.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's the only question I have at this point.
Great. Thank you, Cody.
Thank you. On the enrollment, the, when, was the enrollment projection done as part of this exercise, or was it a separate one that we took off the shelf?
It's a separate exercise. It's an independent consultant does it.
And wow, when, what was the date of the last time they refreshed that?
I don't have it in front of me, but I think the last one we got was about a month ago, maybe.
I have it in front of me. It's, it's from Peter Prada. And the date is on April first, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, got it. So it's very fresh. Could you share that projection with the board or whoever? I'd love to see it.
I think Tony has copies.
I believe Dr. Jones has that.
Okay, great. The, how does it, I'm just trying to understand how kind of, it's like, the report is very pretty and it's easy to understand, which is greatly appreciated. But like, try to understand how the decisions are made kind of at the margin on this stuff. What, just in terms of the square footage, it's constrained by the students. If, if the number of students went from five eleven to like five twelve in the projection, what, what, what does that give you? Like, I think it's, we, we're averaging.
Hundred and sixty-eight, one hundred and sixty-eight more square feet.
Okay, got it. Even though right now a hundred and, is that, is it program area square footage that counts?
It would, no, it'd be total area. So it's program and support core, core circulation space as well.
Even though the average per student now is two oh, is two oh four?
I don't know what the average per student is right now, so I'll just take your word for that. But the state allows, oh, you, because you did the math off of the one we're doing?
Yeah, I just took one, one, a hundred and four thousand.
Yeah, right. So that, that shows you where you're at right now on, on, on this set of educational specifications.
Okay, but, but every extra student is that is a hundred and sixty-eight square feet?
Roughly. I, I, again, I'd have to go back to my other document there, but I'm pretty sure it works out to about a hundred and sixty-eight square feet.
And so your guys, your, the task that you have is you take, you start with a student number. You get your square footage number. There's probably some base square footage you're allowed, then you get to add one.
Right.
Per student. And, and then, and then you allocate it between all the different needs that you accumulate from. When you think about how everything is allocated, I'm just interested. When you think about how everything is allocated, I'm just interested like. You know, wh- where are the areas? Like, I have no idea when I look at this, you know, if. If I like thirty percent of the space is for academic. I don't know, you know, um I guess maybe one request would be. Could you guys, I I someone asked for comparison to current central, which I think it would be is obviously helpful. I think looking at it, I don't know if this is the right way to look at it, but. Percentage of square footage, like what the different things are devoted to. I also wonder if um. If you guys have done projects for other schools in the area, uh I I'd be very curious to understand how are. Percentages of space allocated, which seems to be kind of the core focus here, how that uh compares to other schools, you know, like. Do they do thirteen percent of physical education, which is the number here, whatever? Um that's just a request of, you know, having some some things to compare to if you guys have that information available.
Oh, if I understand you correctly, you would like us to break down the spaces into probably the four or five categories. So in other words, core academic.
Did it was like I I I I took your table in the back and.
Yeah.
I just did it on my computer, but um with like I thought the table you made was really helpful. I know all I did was. In percentages also, so I could see like as a percentage of the total. But then I would love to be able to compare that to. Like currently, you know, are we adding more like as a percent of the building? Are we going up in academic space and down in student dining or? You know, just.
So I think I can answer that pretty pretty quickly for you. Uh we just did two middle schools. We did one for Cromwell and we did one for Plainville. And you folks, all three middle schools are very, very similar in terms of. The allocated space per program area, very, very close. But I will say that right now. Greenwich Middle Greenwich Central Middle School is larger per student than the other two schools.
Um are these, I I assume these the there's these reports aren't like confidential. Did you guys do tables like this for the other schools that?
Very similar, yes.
Could you uh share those with Tony or and and I I'd love to see those and I can do.
The only thing I can do, well, here's what I can do is I I just gotta seek permission from those districts that because they're. They pay for those documents. I just want to make sure that they're okay with us sharing.
Sure, maybe. And if they're like us, they probably have to post them on the internet.
They may very well, and it's all I'm gonna do is just seek permission first.
No, totally. Great. Uh so that that that's awesome. That so the thing I was the last question, uh and then I'll. And actually, are Kathleen, are we able to submit questions in writing?
Sure.
Okay, cool. So I'll 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 ask one more and then I'll save everything else for writing. But um when you when you think about like if you had an extra ten thousand square feet. Uh and if you had ten thousand square feet fewer to use. Like assume the student number stays the same, how do you think about where you would allocate that space? And where you would take that space away if you had to. And I'm interested in Tom's opinion on this as well.
I was gonna say it's really Tom's opinion. It's we we do what we're told.
Okay, so you so Roger, you guys are just taking, got it. Tom, I I'd love to hear your take on that.
Uh I think that kind of goes back to what Karen was mentioning earlier, and you know, I think we're always looking for. Um more flexible spaces, so rooms where interdisciplinary work can happen. So if you were talking about having ten thousand more square feet. Um more academic spaces where you could bring classes together and work on um interdisciplinary type. Um projects or opportunities, um you know, uh adding technology again, when you look at, you know, either maker spaces or innovation spaces. Spaces and things like that. Um some sort of way to to bring what the world is for our kids now. Into the school would be what I would do with with additional space, uh learning spaces. You know, I think. We could go into things like looking at our our guidance and wellness area and something that was brought up before by by Karen. Um Kolski, the the idea of where the where the kids are going. Um you know, more and more recently, having a space for students to go when they just need to kind of reset. Um so looking at creative ways to expand on some of those spaces to give kids what they need throughout the school day, I think was how we would use extra space. Um and then in terms of a a loss of space, um you know, I think it it. I don't know if if looking at the size of the classrooms, um our classrooms right now um are are much smaller than than what are proposed. So I think we're used to smaller rooms. Um but you know, the I the idea that um we'd look at some of the ways. That we might be able to spread that across the building. I think what we put through in terms of what we hope for in the building. Um all those areas are necessities, so I don't know if there would be a way to maybe scale down. Um if we were forced to um across the board. Uh otherwise, I think I'd really have to kind of dive in a little bit more deeply in terms of. Um you know, some of the the flex spaces that we're using, um because we need our core areas for sure. Um but um some of those swing spaces are flex spaces, you know, um I I also just want to go on record that the idea that. In school suspension room, I I I wouldn't want that sort of as the name of the room. Um it might be used for something like that, but I certainly wouldn't want to say this is the space. Um so you know, we look at spaces like that. I would say I really wouldn't need this particular room. Or get more creative um in those areas. That makes sense.
Super helpful answer. Thank you. All right, I'm good, Kathleen. I'll I'll send the rest some writing.
Great. And then we'll post obviously any questions that you have so everyone can see them. Um Ms. Costin.
Just to elaborate on what Tom said, when I was in middle school, we used to have a place called the cage, and that's where we would. It was like a a a room with a big window so everybody could see who was basically in detention and. And and wave and laugh at you while you were, you know, getting a tisk tisk thing. But um so I just wanna. Come back to the idea briefly um about enrollment because I live on a road. That has been redistricted multiple times. And for a time it was central, then a time it was eastern, and I think it was it switched back and forth once or twice more. And eastern is overcrowded. And you know, I I hate to say that our word, you know. Um you know, redistricting is is touchy, but there are some families. Who would possibly be destined for eastern that. May want to attend a brand new school because as as I saw when I was a Glenville family, you know, if you do build it, they will come. And um to take some of the heat off a an overcrowded school, you know. I I I just want to put it out there, it may be an attractive option, um if families were given that option. And um you know, the current families, you know, I I don't know that it would affect them that much. If we were building a proper sized school. Um the other question I had, because we heard a lot about um concerns about traffic and. Is whether we had the results of the soil testing that we were waiting for to see where the building. Could be supported and cited properly. So I didn't know if um we had the results of of that. Sort of research yet. And then um I had one other question. Oh. The fields are always such a big deal, and I, you know, I have to ask. You know, we're looking at an amphitheater, which is so cool, and I wouldn't ever want to, you know. Lose that space, you know, just as we're looking at fields, the fields have become like, you know, I I know people. Lining up to speak about fields in this town. I just want to be sure that. You know, wherever the building is cited, that we preserve the amphitheater, but also have adequate field space for the students so that. They get the most out of their P E and recreation. That's all. Sorry, I put a lot in there.
I think I think we did, um I'm trying to find it in the aspect, but I think we dealt with it on. Site development. I think what uh. That's on page twenty eight. And I think that we said that the sighting of the new facility would be extremely important. Currently, the school is located in a residential neighborhood. Traffic is exists. Designing the new facility must take into account. Ways to mitigate some of the existing traffic issues and not create new ones. Also, the existing athletic fields are compromised due to poor drainage, which marginalizes their use of the field seasonally. Design professionals will need to confer with the Board of Education Facilities Director and the Towns Park Recreation Director to develop a comprehensive plan. That addresses the community's athletic field requirements with regards to baseball fields, soccer fields, tennis courts. So we're we're basically saying, we're telling the architectural design team, this is important. And you just can't come in and design what you think is gonna work. You need to confer with the people who control these spaces. To make sure that it gets designed properly for their needs.
But I mean, as far as where the soil and the ground.
We don't.
Support, we don't.
We don't. We that's that's beyond our scope. We just do the educational specifications. That will get done. And it could be done almost anytime, but it will certainly be done once a architectural and engineering term team is selected.
If I if I might chime in to you, Laura, I think you're talking about that extra funding that we have to get. Pre prepared early for the building committee, and Dan is working on that.
Okay.
Yeah, to get some pre information. One of the things we've realized that we really almost have to wait until summer because. They have to bring in large equipment that has to be on the field in order to get uh the type of sampling that they need. So he is working on that. Sorry, as you can see, it's hard to do a board call at home. Um okay, so Mr. Healy, your student is bothering me. Um so I believe the next person was Karen Hirsch.
So I I will kind of keep this brief. I have a a question for Principal Healy and then a comment for the board, not in that order. Um you know, the the enrollment projection definitely concerns me because like I said, I look back at our own enrollment projections. Uh that reports that we've been given and and our numbers look slightly different. Um I think we as a board should definitely have that as a discussion because. Traditional, you know, historically, uh our numbers at the at Central have been much higher. Um and while we know that enrollment is is lowered, it's not just lowered here, it's lowered across. All of Connecticut and and much beyond, but for us to not consider the fact that we will probably go back up to where we have been. Uh historically, it's a cyclical trend that happens here, you know, like clockwork. Um would be very short sighted of us. Um I and I, we do not want to create a school where we are. Uh creating it to be overcrowded before we even uh put a shovel in the in the ground. So I I would like to just sort of. Uh have that discussion, not tonight necessarily, but with our our board. Um and uh you know, the other question I have is actually for Principal Healy. Um having looked through the ed specs, you know, looks fantastic to me. Again, one of the things that I saw. Were just a a couple of little quirks and and lack of discussion on um flex space, but is there something that you? Um you know, and the administration at Central, um the staff and educators. Um feel was not included in here that you think might best serve the students. Um in in some way for us to consider or have as a discussion.
So we actually have not had a chance to kind of go through as a as a staff, the this particular draft or anything. Um so I can't speak to sort of what anybody may have discussed that they they think isn't there. Um what I can say though is that um in the quick time that we were able to um. Get Fran and Roger in front of the staff, we um. Got a great deal of input from pretty much everyone in the building and they were very, very receptive. So um I. Uh without having eyes, multiple eyes looking at it and saying what what they felt is or isn't there. Um I do know that um there are probing questions that they they asked in the conversations that we had throughout those two days or day and a half. Um they were very receptive to our to our input. So what I've looked at right here really does reflect um what we were going for. I think the conversations that we've already had sort of addressed some of the things that I would say, which is maybe. How we've named certain areas or referencing things like themes that aren't necessarily themes that we're using. So it's more nomenclature and and phraseology than it is anything else, but in terms of.
Like the farm, the farm as opposed to the garden that you guys have? I was just checking.
Yes, cows and and things too. I mean, that's great, but.
I figured you might have to go to to other boards for that discussion, but um so I might make the request of you that, you know, once you and your. Um staff and administration have had a time to sort of digest, if there are things that you feel that are missing or that truly would. Uh positively impact our students uh experience at Central Middle School educationally and and beyond. Please do uh let us know in the midst of these discussions. I really would love to hear uh hear that from you guys because I think it's a. We have several Central Middle School current and previous families here, but you know, to to know what you guys are doing uh on a daily basis now. Uh for all of us, it would be very helpful discussion as to what you might want, anyway.
Uh yes, and thank you for for offering that opportunity. I know that um absolutely everyone's very excited about it, so. Um we'll definitely take a look as a group and I'll I'll provide any feedback through Tony.
Ms. Downey.
Uh no, I know we want to move on to the next section, so okay, this we um just I there was great discussion about collaborative space. And particularly things like with the media center being close to the technology. Um that that was just an example, but that doesn't seem to be communicated in the ed specs. So it seems to back to kind of making it as clear as possible for the building committee that. The group of us were having this discussion, one of us will be on the building committee, but you know, there's a lot that's gonna be going on. So. Um if we are thinking that's what collaborative, working together, meaning is, I think we need to spell it out a little more clearly. In the document. So that was just a comment um for the next for the next iteration, um and whatever. Um you had no need to respond.
Great. Joe?
Just a quick one. Hey, Tom, uh you said that you're gonna uh take this this draft to your staff to 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 your your people. Uh that I think would be one of the most important discussions uh for us to be to at least here or be part of. Uh so i- if you could create, and I know it's once again creating more process, but yeah. If you're gonna have that meeting of brainstorming anyway, I would certainly think that or certainly I know I'd like to be part of that discussion, at least just to fly on the wall. And hear what you guys have to say, because that makes me feel more comfortable that we're certainly heading in the right direction and doing the right thing. So if you set up something like that, I'd certainly love to be able to sit in the back of the room and and listen to what you guys have to say.
You could always have Tom come back and report up to a board meeting or something like that one before. We, because this is, like I said, this is the first of probably many iterations, so we can have him be a part of that conversation there.
I'll tell you though, Kathleen, I don't think I'd get the same satisfaction and information out of hearing Tom's report. As I would from hearing the discussion itself. Uh that's where I think a a lot of the information that I find is important. Uh to understand as this process goes forward and the community relies on us to look after their interest in in this project and report back to them. How we came to these decisions. I I'm not personally, I I don't get the information I need out of just a report on a discussion. I I'd rather be uh part of that discussion, if not just even uh even watching that discussion uh from a uh from a background. From a fly on the wall, as I mentioned.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure there's a way that Tom then disseminates it to the entire public, because that's obviously, we need to be incredibly transparent. So. If you want to do that, that's fine. I'm just saying that I'd still want Tom to then come back and sort of deliver a message so that all everyone listening could also be a part of that conversation. Um, okay, are there more? Can we go to the next section? Okay, so is the next section building systems or could we be on that? Site development? Any hands? Feel like Christina's trying to do something there. Yes, Christina.
Um I'm just gonna ask, um to the extent we have kind of like little nitpicky questions, kind of like comments. Is it best to just do those in writing and not use up time for the group? And just those should all go to Dr. Jones, correct?
I think, yep, absolutely. And then obviously she'll answer them and we'll post all the answers on the board docs so people can see our answers ahead of public comment next time.
Um I just um wait, so which section are we in now?
I went all the way, but tell me if I skipped to building systems.
We can show the building system.
What page, Kathleen?
Oh, sorry, that is page.
Twenty five.
Five.
Um actually, I did have a question about that. I I know it's got, uh we talk about energy usage. Um so I know we in the talks about at at some point in here about lead certification. I don't know. If there's, if you've been, um this is to the consultants, that whether I know lead is different than in. Energy neutral um kind of building, what your experience has been in that, and whether that's something we should be talking about as a board. And I know the state requires a certain lead level, but going above and beyond that. That's something we need to specify to the building committee, correct?
That's correct.
First, understand what the options are. And again, that's something for us to have a discussion about.
Yeah, we we basically tell you that the state requires the minimum lead certification or equivalent to lead certification level. Uh if the district decides that they want to go to a higher level or more environmental uh environmentally friendly uh construction. Uh for and and there's various ways they can do this. It's strictly up to them and they will direct us. We can put it into the ed spec. I think in here, we did have a pretty good discussion with a couple of people on it. That's why I think we said that. We would we would encourage the architects uh and engineers to have a discussion with the sustainability committee of Greenwich. Because I and and the building committee, because I think we they will take direction from them as to what levels they want to achieve.
Okay, that great. Yeah, so we'll we'll move forward to that. And then we will have an emergen- it it kind of talks about an emergency generator. That there should be one. As opposed to like, we're gonna mandate that, correct?
Yes.
Requirement of the project.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Michael Joseph.
Yeah, I'm on page eleven. I don't know how we got to twenty-three. I'm sorry, I hate to be that guy. They. If we can go, if we can about the 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 ed specs, the interior building environment. Academic Core Programs, they. And I get, so first of all, I think the. As a as a process thing, I think a question document would be would be terrific. I'm thinking. Similar to what we did for the budget where we. We had lots of questions, you know, particularly on some of these smaller things. Because I think that could also help us as a as a and it became one FAQ. I think that would particularly help us as a board, talk about some of these, these, these bigger issues. Because I'm hearing a couple that I think we might need to make some decisions on. Like that certification, like the what enrollment number we want to be based on and some of these other issues. On the Academic Core Program, the I guess the just about the enrollment, it's still tied to the enrollment. I just, do we have, I'm assuming we do, we have right now, do we have classes bigger than twenty-four? In the middle school.
Tom, you'd be better off to answer that. I think there are a couple of classrooms, but.
We we have a few that are bigger than twenty-four. Our our class sizes are very skewed based on just sort of scheduling and leveling of classes. So I have some that are fifteen and some that are twenty-six, but most I would say on average, we kind of sit in that range of about twenty or so, twenty, twenty-one. But I do have a few classes that are over twenty-four.
Cool, cool. And what is, forgive me, what is? An SRBI math class?
Okay.
It's on page fourteen.
Yeah, that I think actually we're changing that. To MTSS, which is a multi-tiered system of support.
That makes more sense.
I think like a job, but I I think that was, we do have a, I hired an additional math teacher a few years back and he serves as an avid teacher and an interventionist. So we do have a. An interventionist for me.
Do we use classroom, did the ELA, the English classes have classroom libraries? Or do we use the?
Both. We have classroom libraries and they use the Media Center.
So I guess that's the, since we're building fresh, I wondered if that's something. I don't see that in here and I just wondered if, because I know classroom libraries take up a lot of space and. It's like a science classroom can look different than a social studies classroom, an English classroom. If we're building new, an English classroom might want to look different. So that that might be something to think about here. Those are those, those are all my questions. Those are all my questions. They.
Ms. Hirsch.
Yeah, one last question, since we were moving to the end, there was a little section, I think on page twenty. I don't remember exactly, twenty-six, twenty-five, whatever, construction bonus requests. It said we could seek all special programs eligible for school bonus, which is the school readiness program or out of district students. I'm just wondering where that came from. Was that just something that we can? Was that just something put in there from you guys as the consultants, because it's something we could apply for for grants?
Yeah, if 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 it pertains to you, we will get the data and then supply it to the state as part of the when the actual. Application gets submitted.
I can actually, Roger, I was going to say something about that when we got to that area, but.
Turn it over to Kathleen.
Yeah, choice does not apply to us because it's not valid to Greenwich. We have internal magnet programs. We don't take out of district students, so.
Okay.
You could remove that.
Okay.
Thank you. And guys, I didn't mean to, I I was just trying to follow the document, but if you want to go back, please. Feel free. Ms. Kowalski.
Thanks. I had a question regarding the English Language Learners Classroom. The previously it said the average classroom would be eight hundred square feet. This is two hundred and fifty square feet. So what is this? The the purpose of this type of room and do we have something equivalent to it now?
Tom?
That's on page ten.
Yeah, so our ELL program, our numbers for the whole program across all three grades are typically smaller. So. When they run those classes, which are multi-grade level by English proficiency level. Those classes can be as small as four or five students, maybe as as large as six or seven, but typically they're not bigger than that because of just, you know. The numbers of students that we have and the way they're they're leveled. We currently do have a classroom that is the ELL room. And it is one of our smaller classroom spaces for that very reason. They don't, she just doesn't need a lot of space to service all of her students. In that sheltered setting, because those students obviously also go out and go into other classes. Studies, Science and things like that. So this is specifically for those students whose proficiency requires them to have sheltered instruction in. English Language Arts and potentially Social Studies.
Got it. The two hundred and fifty square feet just felt a little cramped. And so I just wanted to make sure, I mean, obviously you saw this, so that makes it. Addresses those issues. Because that room is smaller than smaller than the suspension room. So I was wondering what the priority was. Anyway, so that relating to that question. And then I was really excited to see with respect to the science. And then the science prep rooms, I imagine. The science prep room is kind of like a Jack and Jill bathroom between the two classrooms, if I'm envisioning that right, where they can both use and. They have additional. They they can keep all of their extra beakers and that kind of stuff in in there.
Right. Most science. Most science rooms now have an actual prep room because of the the nature of the content. And the fact that there's so many materials. So if you put the two science from side by side, they can actually share the prep room in between.
Got it. Okay. No, I think that makes perfect sense. And then. One last question on the 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 special education. Room, it looks like, well, that is the concept there that it's more like. A wing would be a bad spot, but like a larger room that's divided into smaller rooms that have. Each of these particular carve-outs that they can go under the life skills classroom or the resource room or the speech room. Is that all? Designed to be in the same area?
So some of it may be distributed through the school on whether sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade, but there's a. There is a certain area that'll be in common and. I think what.
They want, obviously, they're gonna want to have their resource rooms by their grade levels. So for example. You have six resource rooms, two of them are going to be designated in the sixth grade wings, two of them will be in seventh and two of them will be in eighth. The OTPT room, that will be some, a single room that will be used by all the grades. Along with the the testing office, the conference room, the life skills room will probably be multi-graded, so it could be anywhere really. But yeah, I mean, I would to you that the resource rooms will be by grade level.
Okay, and from a standpoint, so I I think it's actually better that they're spread out throughout the. School, so it's not as if kids are going into the special education wing. That has a connotation that I think nobody would would want. And I think. While kids in elementary school like to get pulled out and go because it's somewhat special, middle school kids don't. And they don't like to be seen as having something different or unique about them in this in this manner. So I think that that is to spread it out and make it all part of the schools is a much better design.
Right. And the life skills room is gonna be an actual classroom.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, what is the life skills room?
The life skills room will be a classroom, students. Who basically they'll probably be mainstream for just very short periods of time with the throughout the day there. They'll have actually. A lot of things within the room that they can do. So for example, they'll probably have a. A refrigerator stove, a washer dryer. They'll have most of the things that you have in the kitchen so that they can learn a lot of different life skills. It will be more self-contained than most classrooms. And it will also have a bathroom available to them as well.
Got it. That's, this is a question actually for Tony. Central Middle School is not. A magnet school at this point in time, correct? It's Western, that's the magnet school, right?
That's correct.
Okay, um, and going back to Laura's question about. You're not using the R word. Maybe we can convert this and use the M word if this was something that we wanted to consider. Just throwing it out there.
Ms. Downey.
Yeah, now that we're kind of in the detailed section, I want to talk about the auditorium just for a second. I know we've talked about a little bit. It designates a five hundred and fifty seat auditorium. What is, how many seats do we currently have?
I think you're just shy of six hundred.
So slightly smaller.
Slightly.
I think, again, I guess for comparison, when we have a comparison chart, that'll be good for us to know. And now at one point that I thought was interesting, it talks about a middle aisle seating arrangement. So basically one aisle, whereas that auditorium currently has two right now. I just think food for thought. I don't know if that's standard to only do one aisle, but I think those become very long aisles. Maybe that, I don't know if that's a board discussion or if that's a design issue. I don't know if you can talk about that. Roger?
Certainly, we can, we can make it. I think part of the issue is that, again, we try not to restrict the architects too much. It could be very. Very well that they come in and come in with a two aisle. Design, but we're saying at a minimum it has to have at least one aisle.
I feel like that's like, I think, but again, back to interpretation, I'm reading that.
Okay.
It has to be, you know, I was saying, like, you know, it could just be aisles, you know, flexible or, you know, again, because. And we're not the group in the room that's doing the designs.
Not a problem.
And I just wanted to clarify, we do, it makes reference to a shower. We do not have showers in the locker rooms currently, correct?
I think there are some, there were some showers, but they're not used.
Okay, so Tom, you're good with eliminating hottest option in.
The the girls locker room was redesigned not that long ago, maybe ten or fifteen years ago, and there are no showers in that area. However, the boys locker room has not been redesigned, still has that, but it's just storage right now. So we don't need, we don't change for them anymore or anything like that.
Okay, thank you. I'm good.
Michael Joseph.
In in special ed, I think this might be for you, Doc, Dr. Jones, is the life skills per class, would that be for? An existing program currently at Central Middle School or? Do, is there any capacity here? Or is that something else to talk about as far as future program?
So this is very similar to the conversation we've had about adding a program at elementary, because we didn't have it. All three of the schools do have programming for alternate curriculum. So that's what this this class is. It's an existing.
It's an existing program that we have at Central or existing at the elementary that we'd want to start in the middle school.
It's existing at all three elementaries. It's existing at the high school. It's just for some reason, we never had it at elementary. So this is the same alternate curriculum students. It's a very.
You keep saying all three elementary, you mean all.
You meant the middle school, all three.
I was just about to ask the same. Having it all three middles, but we were bringing it downward to the elementaries.
Yes, yes. Sorry. I stayed up too late last night.
Yeah, I know the feeling.
Okay, um, just the floor is open. Obviously, we're jumping around, which is fine. But we also could send, if we have a lot of detailed questions, this is a great beginning. I think. Michael Joseph, sort of the Google share document that we did for the budget. Is a great idea. And then we could post it on board docs before our next meeting that we have this come back with a revised draft. When we will hopefully be taking public comment.
Do you want, do you want to set a timeline, Kathleen, on, you know, since we seem to be kind of winding down on questions because we're going into the knits, I guess?
I do. I mean, to Joe's point, I think that the next step would be Tom and his team, right, reviewing it and. You know, is it possible? I don't want to put you all on the spot, but is it possible that we could have? This come at our next actual scheduled board meeting, revised draft. I'm not saying it needs to be. Anything, it doesn't really need to be, you know, any sort of more thought out than this. It would just then have our questions and answers. And perhaps hopefully that would give Tom some time for you and your team to meet. And then you could also report back at the board meeting. Because that was scheduled for May nineteenth, and then we could take public comment on this as we work towards. You know, seeing it sort of in its final form in June. To then actually vote on.
I think that question goes to Tom, correct?
I, yeah, I guess Tom, Dr. Jones, I've met the board kind of always just gets in line. It seems we're really good citizens like that, right? So we'll make it work.
I think from the district perspective, we, you know, we can do it, but I do need to, as I mentioned really early on. The next level from even the admin side is our security technology facilities. They also have to now go. Just like Tom is doing with.
In terms of, if you want me to speak to to my end things, and I know Mr. Kelly mentioned about wanting to sort of be a fly on the wall in those conversations. So my immediate thought was to use one of our Wednesday afternoon. Times to for everyone to kind of dig into that, which would be the easiest. However, some of those are already scheduled between now and then, so I don't know that I could. I could borrow that time right away. So what I could do is I could use it during interdisciplinary team meeting time. It just means that having people maybe observe some of those meetings or I could kind of let you know when they were happening and as as you're able to hear some of the conversations, it might be difficult to hear all. Because they happen through sort of in those forty-five minute periods throughout the day. That would probably be the easiest way, because they did meet. Oftentimes, they talked a lot about the team model when they were giving that feedback. So for them to look at the document as a team kind of makes sense. But again, I can, I can kind of try to build out a schedule, share that with you and and obviously as people are able and would like to come in and listen, and that's fine. And. Then obviously I could pull something together to share out more publicly as well.
Yeah, I know, it's a, it's, it's, it's fast. I I recognize that, Ms. Downey, it's probably what you're about to say is that I'm putting, I know it's a fast turnaround. But the only reason I, we could always do another special meeting, but I like the concept of at least having this on the agenda for May nineteenth, because that. The public knows about that date, right? So then they know that they to come and to speak with their thoughts at that time. So I'm not saying it might not be ready for prime time, but we should at least have it on the agenda and have our Q and A. At least fleshed out. Go ahead, Ms. Downey.
Yeah, like I was gonna suggest. Even if it's this version of the ed specs, I mean, I know it's on for tonight's meeting, but people might not have paid attention and we could put that on for the meeting next week. We can have the Q and A document. I guess the question is if we think it would be more productive for us as a board, when we get. A revised one ultimately to have it black lined, red lined. If that would, because it is lengthy and would be helpful. I don't, I don't know, or do people not want that because it is kind of more. Short like that when things are corrected. I don't know. That was just a suggestion, not, you know, food for thought.
I'm indifferent on that one. I just, I I do think it's important that we get the the comps in terms of what it looks like today versus what what this would be. I think that's a helpful suggestion. And if we could have that by next Thursday, that would be a huge step forward. Ms. Hirsch.
No, I was just gonna say, I think whatever the next iteration is, if if you want to, after the next iteration to do something redlined, I think just we we've discovered there's a few little. You know, knits in this one and the fact that it's not, it's often referred to as Greenwich Middle School and sort of Central. We don't need to redline a lot of that because we're not. Necessarily changing anything. It's just revising some typos and some. Adjustments in language so that it's, from what we discussed tonight, I think if you go forward after that and you want to redline it, I think that that is a discussion the board could have. Depending on how many changes there are, but I just think it may makes it more confusing to cross out a type, you know, typo or a name to just fix it. It's. That's just a, that's just a ten cent opinion, though.
Fine, okay. Fine, okay. Ms. Kowalski.
Uh, yeah, I was just saying Karen stole my words, so I just echo her comments on that point.
All right, great. Okay, so I think that, um, it's not for sure, but we're hopefully marching towards, um, having this revised. But why don't we give ourselves a deadline, um, as a board to put in questions so that they have enough time to respond? So. Would it be too much to ask to do it by Friday as a team so that they have the weekend to respond? Okay. Great. Thank you so much.
As long as we find out what a buffalo chopper is.
That's your question, Laura, number one.
One to the Google doc.
Okay, number one. Um, good. Well, this was, this is a really great start. This was obviously a special meeting for a special, wonderful, special purpose. So, um, I'm excited about this. I know the community is excited about this and, um. This was a really well-done document and a great start. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, your input from everybody was just really helpful. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you so much. Well, we will be meeting a lot. Um, so with that, can I get a motion? Joe, where are you at? Come on, it's usually your job. You're on mute. Joe, put your hand up.
Here I am, motion to adjourn.
Okay, can I get a second? All right, Ms. Hirsch. Um, I have to do a roll call. Okay. Cause we're meeting this way. Ms. Kowalski?
Yes.
Ms. Downey?
Yes.
Mr. Kittle?
Yep.
Ms. Hirsch?
Yes.
Dr. McConti, Anthony? Formal. Okay, Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Costin?
Yes.
Kathleen Stowe, yes. Thank you so much. Thanks for joining everyone. Have a great.
Thanks everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you.